Okay, Mayor. You're good to go.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening and welcome to the City Council's Special Session Meeting of September 1st, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilwoman Petron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three tonight is consideration of the mayor's appointments of Gabriel Byrd, Melissa Houston, Ellen Knack, Julie Knudsen, and Jermaine Peterson to the Ward Two Candidate Selection Committee. I'll entertain a motion to confirm or reject the appointments. Councilmember Foreman, do you have a question? Okay. All right, the motion on the floor is confirm the appointments. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The vote was unanimous and the appointments have been confirmed.
Thank you. Item four is discussion and possible action related to the pandemic caused by the coronavirus. Before we dive into our first update from Deputy Chief Rick Jackson, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Smith to give us the current numbers.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see here. Okay, so on your screen should be our gating criteria spreadsheet. And most of you are familiar with this. If you're not familiar with it, this is an idea that we created back in April. And it was to keep track of the numbers so that in part, we could help. We'd have a quantifiable basis in which to make our decisions on. So for today, September 1, we're reporting 1,937 total cases in the city of Norman. Of course, that's a cumulative number, so that will never go down. Number of new cases was 38. We're remaining steady with the number of deaths at 34. And as of right now, we have a total active cases of 251. Our hospital numbers online is 25 and 26. As of as of 8/30, August 30th, is the last report that we've received. We have confirmed 15 people in the hospital with three of those needing ICU care. Okay, is there anything else you want to see?
I think that was just a great way to view where we've been at for the past several weeks. Are you able to show the graph with a mark of when we passed the mask ordinance?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I've got this on a sliding scale. And when I slide out right here, this brown number that I'm circling with my cursor, July 8th, that is when the mask ordinance began. And you can see our numbers. So that indicates when the mask ordinance began. And we've been trying to track the effectiveness of it ever since. And you can see that we've been shortly afterwards, we had some numbers here where it's indicating that it was working. And we've increased population, so we've increased the number of new cases a little bit since then. But ultimately, we're being consistent with our numbers.
Okay, I can live with consistent. You know, I think many cities have a status quo where the only thing that really changes in their communities is the weather, whereas a college town, we have a 20,000 person increase in our population. So I want to commend this council for being willing to consistently look at what is happening as we try to manage the pandemic in our community with these changing population numbers. So are there any questions from council regarding the numbers as Chief Smith has presented them?
Councilmember Beerman?
Chief, I have a question. How, if at all, are OU's numbers included in this? Can anyone speak to kind of how OU reports their numbers to us? Are they included in these numbers? Do we have to add OU's numbers separately? How does that work?
Well, I can answer that on a limited basis. So the one report that I see that would give me any indication if numbers are coming from OU is what we call a first responder report. And that first responder report, I wish I could share it with you, but it has some HIPAA-related information on it, so I cannot. But I can look at that report and based off of the addresses, I can tell you if this is likely an OU case or not. But that is the extent of the information that I receive on it. So I know if Dr. Brassler is on with us, he might be able to answer that question better than me.
He is not, but City Manager Powell and I actually had a conversation with OU leadership this afternoon, and I asked that very question because we are getting that question a fair amount. And we know that there are concerns about that, perhaps students even getting tested and putting their parents' home address, not their current Norman address. So we are really trying to encourage all students who are getting tested to go to Goddard, where it is free, just like ME, where they're clearly marked as students. So there's not a perfect system right now, but my understanding is that it is with the health department numbers.
Yeah, I can offer some context there. My name is David Sarat, Vice President for Student Affairs and Dean of Students at OU. That's correct, Mayor Clark. That generally speaking, what they're trying to do is actually pull local address data to inform the county data as well as the surrounding areas in Norman. So that's actually the reason why we, right now, we actually have a dashboard that was put up recently. If you go to ou.edu forward slash together, forward slash dashboard, one word, it has data that represents the local Cleveland County data, state data, as well as zip code data for the surrounding area. That should be inclusive of not only Norman citizens, but also students locally. We also have separate data that reflects Goddard test data, which is probably predominantly students, but it could be inclusive of students, faculty, staff, or their families.
Dr. Sarat, are you able to share your screen and pull up that? I didn't give you any warning, but I think we might switch the agenda around a little bit since we're diving into that. I got walked through it this afternoon. It is pretty user-friendly at this point. And hopefully, we can all see it and you can share the same information with all of councils, so we can share the same information with all of our residents.
Sure, let me see if I can pull up a window now. All right.
Dr. Sarat, I put a link in the chat if everyone wants to click on that link.
Great. And I'm sharing my screen now. Can folks see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. The URL up top, the ou.edu forward slash together dashboard. And if you actually scroll down below, the information that I find most useful is simply looking at the state and local data. So on the top, on the right side, you'll see that has statewide data right there. And you can also click a button that actually gets you to county-related data. And then Norman city data as well as local zip codes in terms of trends. And the information on the right side, you'll see some just different kind of charts that kind of helps you understand the trend as well as the actual raw data. On the left-hand side, there's some Goddard-specific data for Goddard Health Services. So we have data representative of Norman campus. And you'll see information on test results here. I will say that the test results information is inputted manually, so they have to look at a lot of information and verify it and then update that. Likely, the best way to look at that data will be starting to pay attention to weekly trends per week because the numbers right now luckily are not that significantly high. But if you put your cursor over each of the different charts, you'll see that actually the actual numbers related to the positive test results and then percent positives based on the number of tests during that week. And then below that, you'll see two additional charts that indicate the number of faculty, staff, or students who have, based upon our screening, have been quarantining or self-isolating. On the left-hand side, bottom left for who they are, if you just roll the cursor over, you'll see it's students and then staff and then faculty. And then on the right side, you'll see the reasons for quarantine or self-isolation. So it could be a number of reasons, including they tested positive or potential exposure, maybe having symptoms, or they're part of a household in which there may be a member of that household who's experienced symptoms or tested positive. So this is pretty much it. I'm happy to share some additional details with Mayor Clark to share with others if you like. I'm happy to email it to you later on, too.
I'd appreciate that. And thank you for sharing that. I want to again thank the university for being an excellent partner and collaborating in how we jointly label this because the University of Oklahoma is located within the city of Norman. So it serves us well to approach this together. So I think the dashboard is a great tool. I think you can compare the numbers to the numbers that we see for our city. And hopefully, that'll give us some great data to work with. The testing percentage positive is still pretty high, so that, I think, is concerning. But you can also see a trend. I think you had the Oklahoma, it was kind of flat where the Norman one went like that. So that's why we're having an update right now. And again, it's just because it's the nature of who we are and we've grown by 20,000 residents. So that's all right, but communication is key. So does anyone have any questions for Dr. Sarat? Councilwoman Petron?
Hi, Dr. Sarat. Thank you for being with us. I wondered if you could tell us how outbreaks are handled in student housing as well as in Greek housing?
Sure. So our residential housing plan, we actually had a preventative strategy. So before move-in, we required students to provide proof of a negative COVID test before they could actually even get their keys to the door. So we weren't having residents moving onto campus already positive. Based on our research, we suspected that students were coming from regions with about at least 1.5% potentially up to 2% positive rates. And based off that, that was pretty accurate. We were around 1.5%, 6% or so. Don't quote me on that, but about 1.5 roughly percentage where students actually tested positive, but they remained at their home and recovered at home. And we provided support for them before they even came and were going to campus. So once they're on to campus, obviously, we have a nation and state where there's community spread. So we know that our students are going into the community and socializing and contracting the virus that way. We've had some positive cases in the residence halls. And so when that happens, those students are contacted by our health services staff. Contact tracing is done through Goddard Health Services at the request and actually at the authorization of Cleveland County Health Department. And they continue to also locate anyone who's a potential exposure. And we have those exposures quarantined. And we also have those who test positive, self-isolate in facilities on campus. And so they're provided food, support, and they're contacted that way. Now, with our Greek-affiliated housing, we worked with them to also include testing as part of their strategy upon move-in as well, which was good. They partnered with us on that. After that, we've also given them recommendations to do the same thing that we're doing in housing. But I emphasize it is a recommendation. Some houses definitely are probably better than others when it comes to that, but they had the same expectation to isolate individuals who have symptoms or test positive. Contact tracing would be done because in most cases, if they're testing positive, they're again having a local address in our area and they're working with our contact tracers to notify them that they may have been exposed and then give them instructions on how to self-isolate or quarantine. And so similar procedure, but obviously, it's not our operation that we run in terms of the houses.
Can you clarify that for those that are watching? The relationship between the university and the fraternities and sororities?
Yeah, sure. So our relationship with our Greek-affiliated houses is that the Greek-affiliated houses are privately owned and operated, so they're not owned by the university. And so there's limitations on what we can mandate in terms of actions and behaviors in private homes essentially. So we do have, though, a close consulting and advising relationship, obviously, because these are Greek houses that have affiliation with the university through our registered student organizational process. And so there are ways we can continue to work with them, also influence certain behaviors. And we also can hold organizations responsible through our code of conduct, but it's through organizational status as opposed to us kind of controlling the operations of the house. So I want to make sure. And I don't know if Kristin, if you had anything to offer there, too, if I'm speaking out of turn?
It's perfectly said. We do, I think, enjoy a highly collaborative relationship. I think some campuses have much more animosity between their Greek community and their administration, but we work really hard to cultivate ours and work with all of our chapters across five different councils. So I do feel like that advising relationship is stronger than you might see in other institutions.
Can you tell me what the percent positives are that are coming from the Greek houses? Because this is for the public. This is a strange jurisdictional issue because you all have it for what you were speaking of towards disciplinary actions like hazing. And then the city has boarding house licensure that we give to the Greek houses. So we kind of have our hands in different pots when it comes to the Greek houses. So I'm wondering, can you tell me if, what percentage you're seeing of these positives? What percentage lives in a Greek home?
Yeah, and I couldn't tell you that. I don't, we don't have that data very cleanly delineated because obviously, it's a private address and one in which we're not tracking by the addresses and the private homes. Normally, we do that for like a private apartment complex. We could probably guess that in terms of the student positives, we can only really guess at that because a lot of student positives would be living off the epidemic anyway, and our residential ones are pretty small in terms of numbers right now, is all we know.
Okay. Well, if there's anything that you might recommend, and I expect you to answer this right away, but maybe get with the mayor at a later time, but that the city could do to help with our end, since they are boarding houses through the city, we don't treat them the same as we would a regular residential home. Let us know how we could be of service to keep epidemics at a minimum, please. And then my last question was, how many people are being tested daily on average that you're aware of, whether the student or staff or?
Yeah, I had to refer you back to the dashboard to get the most accurate numbers in terms of what we're doing for Goddard testing. I cannot speak to the number of tests that are actually going off-campus as well. So the one thing that I want to clarify is that Goddard does serve faculty, staff, and student community members on campus, but a lot of our students are also going to different test areas. One of the reasons why, honestly, is I think there's a myth that if you try to just go somewhere else in the city of Norman to test, that if you avoid Goddard, doesn't get back. And some of our students are really nervous. There's an element of shame associated with testing positive. If it impacts your Greek affiliated house, or there's a lot of students who are really wanting to stay here. And so they're judgmental of anyone who does test positive, thinking that they've done something wrong to expose themselves to risk. So there's that. And then there's also some students who've said that there's a significant disruption to class and they're scared about missing class or feeling that's going to be disrupted because they have to move to a self-isolation location and then had to get additional support. So long story short, there's a number of students who are kind of trying to obey the system in some ways, not realizing that eventually kind of comes back into those larger county numbers.
Yeah, I do want to clarify again, after my conversations with the Cleveland County Health Department, when they're reaching out with the positive test, they are able to put together that this is an OU student and it does get funneled back. Can I say it's 100%? No, I cannot. But I know that we're all aware of what's going on and all working together.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. The work with the health department is really vital for what we're doing with Goddard. And it's been helpful for our contact tracing. You're right, it's not 100%, but it gives us a lot of good trend data and enough for us to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's also, I'll send a follow-up email after this meeting with the link to the screening tool at OU. It's on the dashboard. That's where my students who have tested positive, I make sure they fill that out. I don't even have to ask where they tested. So if you all have residents or parents or anyone that reach out saying, you know, how do I handle this? Make sure we know all of the resources available to us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, Dr. Sarat, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I represent Ward Four, which has a lot of off-campus student housing. And so I am the recipient of a lot of anecdotal stories about how this is all going. And I just want to make sure that I understand, not only for myself, but just for those that are viewing. To get back to the Greek houses, there are a significant number of students that are actually living in what, you know, many in the community would recognize as a Greek house. But there are also a significant number of members that don't live in the house, are still affiliated with the organization, but are living off-campus. So is there those students that are living off-campus and are not subject to, you know, residential housing requirements on campus? How is that reporting being encouraged within the Greek organizations? If they're do they have a reporting mechanism within their organization if they're living off-campus? Or are they just outside of that completely?
Yeah, they're operating as private citizens that happen to be affiliated with the Greek organization. So yeah, there's not that. Now, if there's reason to believe or if there's information that there's an event that is sponsored by a Greek organization at that location, then if we had that documentation, we have the ability to respond from a conduct perspective. But that's obviously much harder to kind of follow up on.
Okay, so if a group of Greek students are living together that are members of the same organization and they are currently self-isolating because either of exposure or a positive test, would the leadership within their organization be aware of that?
Not necessarily, no. Because if they're not living in the actual, yeah, formal Greek house, they would not be accountable necessarily to the president, who then might, you know, share that information elsewhere, yeah.
Okay, and I realize that, you know, this is a challenge for everybody. But so I'm wondering if they're living off-campus, they are a member of a Greek organization, are they also being encouraged to test at Goddard or are they going elsewhere?
Yes, they are encouraged. So we are providing free testing for all of our community members right now. I hope it still remains free as it's been supported locally and on campus. We're actually now in a next phase of promoting additional testing capacity. So as we've been able to kind of get more labs up and running, we'll actually be doing promotion of more testing available on campus pretty soon, probably actually as early as this year.
Okay. And so I still am a little confused about the reporting mechanism that's going, the numbers that you're reporting on your dashboard, are those same cases reflected in the city of Norman data? Or is that over and above the city of Norman data?
It should be consistent with the Norman data just because the right side is actually being, that information being provided through the state health department data.
Okay. And I know one of the questions I get most often, we've already referred to of the sort of this rumor that if, that students are not being reported in Cleveland County and/or Norman because they're listing their permanent resident address. But it sounds like you're trying to address that as well to get them to report locally.
Yeah, it's a far more complicated process than people realize in terms of having that date on the dashboard. Is it possible? Yes, I've asked the same question of our doctors, and it is possible that someone could put a non-Cleveland County address on there. But we try to focus on the biggest areas of concern, which is mainly our areas of congregant housing, where they do have local addresses that are pretty well-established with Greek-affiliated housing, but also our residential students as well, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
To build on, to hold on that one real quick, Councilmember Hall. Chief Smith, are you still with us? Because we've even had numbers from the health department shift a little bit over time for various reasons. Are you able to speak to that at all? Just, I mean, what caused the numbers to fluctuate and why?
I'm having some audio difficulties, but if I heard the question correctly, what I heard was the State Department has some fluctuation in their numbers and what causes that? Is that right?
Yeah, it's not common, but we have seen it.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, we've seen it throughout the last several months. There's a time or two where there's fluctuation in those. And the fluctuations could be caused by maybe a correction such as they find a duplicate or maybe they inaccurately reported something. That's one way of doing it. So there's a lot of idiosyncrasies that go along with the reporting of the data such as time lags. For example, our hospital report is usually reported on a Friday, and then it comes to us on a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. So those numbers are just a snapshot in time because, you know, hospital numbers can fluctuate hourly. So we're receiving some of that information two to three and sometimes four days later. So those are just a couple of the reasons why they can fluctuate a little bit.
Yeah, one additional context that I'm looking into is the behavior of our students who are coming here and leaving during the weekends and how that might impact also numbers of infection rates as well, too. So there may be a lot of students who are going home, wherever they're going, but they're leaving campus. And you'll see a lot of the parking lots empty out on the weekends as you typically see during the school year. So we're kind of watching to see what kind of trends that might impact as well.
Okay, so I had just one more question, and that was concerning when a student would be self-isolating. And I think you mentioned that on-campus housing students would have access to resources in a location to self-isolate. Is that also available to students living off-campus? Or are they responsible for their own self-isolation or quarantine?
Yeah, they are responsible for their own, providing their own. So that's one of the operational recommendations we even gave to any Greek-affiliated housing. And we urge them to just try to set up either contracts with maybe a local hotel or things like that to do the same thing. But yeah, that's unfortunately, it's only available to our residential students. That's all we have the capacity to do.
So are you aware of any Greek organizations that have those kind of contracts in place?
I'm not aware, but I'm sure that there may be some that have that, but I'm not aware of the contracts right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Okay, in regard to Greek organizations, I have heard from some business owners, restaurant and bars, a little confused basically because of what the definition of a household is in regard to capacity and groups of people coming to a place together. So if a fraternity rents out a patio at a bar and 100 of them show up, well, we all live in the same house together. There seems to be some confusion on that based on some feedback I've received. And so kind of just wanted to bring that up since we're talking about the Greek organizations and we'll be talking about bars and restaurants, too, later on. So I don't know if we have any kind of clarity we could offer about that situation. It seems kind of unique to us. It seems kind of unique to us and we have, to have a house that has 100 people living in it, 50 to 100 people, something like that. So that's really the main one I had in regard to Greek organizations. I'll have some more questions later though. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great comment. So I, I'm not the doctor, so Dr. Bradslers is definitely our co-chief COVID officer. I'm sure he could give you some more detailed sort of things about that, but I'll give you a lay perspective. When we are dealing with and working with our Greek affiliated housing, the virus doesn't recognize your Greek letter affiliation, your membership. And the, the basic understanding of the physics of how the virus is spread through droplets and kind of person-to-person contact and how, how often it can be spread with this age populations asymptomatically, you simply want to reduce those, those numbers of people that you would consider as, as a, as a household. So that's been sort of the lay, the lay perspective that I take. And from the way I advise my colleagues or my students, but also even the things that I do for myself, there's a limited amount of people in my family that I interact with without a mask. Otherwise, I'm distance and masked everywhere else. So that would not include 100 or even 20 of my, my favorite relatives, much less, you know, folks and members of my house, so.
Thank you.
I don't see any other comments right now, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Srot and Ms. Partridge and Ms. Daze for joining us. Again, I appreciate the collaboration and the transparency. We will do a better job managing this if we do it together. And I also want to thank OU leadership for taking time to meet with City Manager Pyle and I this afternoon. They are continuing to develop strategies that could include surveillance testing to ensure that we are continuing the most innovative and collaborative approach as both the university and the city to manage this pandemic. So I think we'll, as Dr. Srot said, we may have some announcements later this week. So I really appreciate you guys being here. Clearly, we have a lot of questions and our residents have a lot of questions. So I, I can't thank you enough for your time tonight.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I want to say thank you and I want to also thank you for what you're, you've been doing and proactively. I think the, the, one of the biggest things has been the mask mandate that's been helpful to complement the work we're doing on campus. Students are complying on campus and we did also some research and public health data about the fact that students who were sometimes wearing their masks in public were going to do it 90% of the time if it's required. And that, that requirement in the, in the city has been immensely helpful. So thanks for that.
Definitely. And being a staff member at the university, I can personally attest to the efforts that have been made with signage and, and physical distancing and all of the efforts you're taking to keep our students and staff and faculty safe in the classrooms. Which leads us to our next point of conversation this evening because the issue is not so much in the classrooms as it is in social gatherings. So I asked the Norman Police Department to kind of do a status check on our current mask ordinance. And for those of you that needed a refresher on it, our mask ordinance actually does cover physical distancing and capacity in our bar and bar areas because some of our, let's face it, what serve as basically bars are licensed as restaurants. And so in section 11-1104B, bars and bar areas. Bars and the bar areas within restaurants should limit the capacity for patrons to the number of seats available, which shall be arranged to promote social distancing between groups of patrons. Standing room only areas, not including the entryway, shall be closed to the patrons, which would be bar areas and things like that. You may be aware that Stillwater has had some issues with this and they released a quite hefty amended ordinance on how they're addressing it, including capacity limitations of no higher than 50%. Patron shall not be seated in any booth that adjoins another. No more than 10 persons may be seated at a single booth. Our patrons shall not be allowed to stand next to occupied tables, dance floors and other areas where bar patrons should stand shall be closed but can be used for tables. It goes on and on and on. So I want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can as a city to complement the efforts of the university. And again, it does, it's not like the students are walled off on campus corner or the university. These young people go to our, our restaurants, they go to our, our stores, which we love having them do that. But we want to make sure everyone's being safe while doing that. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Rick Jackson to kind of give us an update of what they saw this weekend.
Greetings, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me. Our janitorial staff has decided to run the sweep vacuum in, in the hallway, so hopefully you can still hear me. We just jumped right into this. So last week during the, the game day meeting we had, there were some concerns by some of the merchants, campus corner regarding particularly businesses and establishments that are out of compliance or not really following the mandate. So I was asked to develop a team to go and look into those that are perhaps will be out of compliance. So I got with my team here, Major David Taischer and Lieutenant Jeremy Garnan. We hashed out some strategies as far as going out into the community to address some of these concerns. What we come up with was that, you know, when we do things, we typically do it at a sort of a large scale. We won't typically isolate any particular business, but for equity reasons, we'll try to hit various areas across the city so we can get a more well-rounded perception on who's complying and who's not. So I ran this by the mayor later and she agreed that a more surgical approach is needed as far as enforcing any mandate on any businesses that aren't following them as required. So we decided to go in soft, you know, plain clothes, surgical approach to make sure that we identify those who were out of compliance. And so I've got a quick summary here that Lieutenant Garnan produced for me to discuss what occurred over the weekend. So in summary, this is what we have. So we decided to do a three-day check period, which is Thursday, Friday and Saturday of this past weekend of the bars throughout various locations in Norman. We had four officers, which are two, two-man teams going to each establishment and we're working four odd blocks at a time. Officers were in plain clothes. We checked roughly 25 bars each night. Some were repeats. Mainly the areas we checked were Campus Corner, Main Street, West Norman, West Main, 36 and, and West Rob and those locations were compliant. In regards to social distancing, all locations checked were practicing distancing at varying levels, okay? As a whole, the ball, the bars were restricting entrances to their establishments via the enforcement of the occupancy capacity limits based on the mandate. Most bars located on Campus Corner were successfully complying with the mandate set forth as well as taking concentrated and deliberate steps to help reduce the spread of coronavirus. Of course, the team did observe some minor incidents that fell short of the mandate. Now, understand that my orders to them was to go in, if we, if someone was out of compliance, to educate and explain to them the need to, to fall within the guidelines of, of the mandate. So that's what my, my guys did. So to correct these infractions, minor encouragements were, were given to remind customers of the mandate and the observed customers complied. For example, one of the team members was standing inside the bird's nest, waiting for his partner to show up. They were politely asked by the bartender to please have a seat at a table because per the mandate, as they quoted, the mandate required me to sit at the table rather than standing. So they were polite about it. My, my guys, you know, complied. And so they, they were impressed with, with the request and the, and the politeness of the bartender when he approached them. It should be noted that the tables were all separated to maintain a distance of six feet or more. All the bars and restaurants located away from Campus Corner were in compliance with the mandate. There were a few minor violations observed occasionally such as a patron failing to properly wear a mask or improperly covering all parts of their face or leaving their nose exposed. There were some groups of people observed outdoors without masks, but they did not witness any of these groups walking into the establishments unmasked. A couple of patios, logis and the porch had customers that were grouped together closer to six foot, but it appeared that these were groups who were already together and they were consuming drinks, which is permitted by the mask mandate. Not the social did have some customers congregate around the bar at times and not distancing as they should. In summary, all locations checked were attempted to satisfy the mandate. A high percentage of those establishments would be considered mostly fully compliant with the mandate. There were some occasional violations, but they appeared to be infrequent and quickly corrected. It did not appear that any business were willfully or purposefully ignoring the restrictions. We observed almost 100% compliance among employees at all locations checked throughout Norman. So it, it appears as they have people are trying to comply. None of my guys noted that they got into any actual conversations with any of the, the owners or managers of any of these bars or restaurants. But they did observe that there was an attempt to comply with the mandate.
I think that's encouraging, but I don't know if all the way surprising. So I guess my question is, how do we move forward with the education and then enforcement? Because the ordinance does allow an enforcement tool to make sure that that's being followed.
Okay, I, I think what we need to do is go in, again, kind of what we did this past weekend, but have an actual team in place. I think because if we, if we develop a team, I call it response or reaction team to, for the next month or two to go into these establishments, to do periodic checks. First of all, they have a working knowledge and history of how many people were in compliance, how many weren't. So we, we keep it with the team. Secondly, it's something that I think that we can accomplish without the need of the police department being involved. As a matter of fact, most of these violations are code violations as far as like occupancy and things of that nature. So therefore that we have people in place, that's what they do. We have, we have code and we also have on the fire side, the fire marshals with the fire inspectors who go in and they check occupancy loads and make, to make sure everyone's in compliance. So it's really not a thing for the police department to do. So I would suggest perhaps developing such a team. They work together. They know who's been in compliance and who's not. We can get more of a consistent idea of who's in violation and who's, and who's in violation, who's, who's complying so that we can then target those people that are not following the mandate consistently versus, you know, trying to enforce a citywide mandate for those that, against those that are actually complying.
And I appreciate that. We've really tried to be surgical in our approach. You know, I, I think what we're trying to do is keep the students here, keep the businesses open and operating safely. City Manager Pyle, if, if we have such a team and I'm assuming overtime would be involved, I would hope that this would qualify for CARES funding. Do we have any, any ruling on that as of yet?
Yes, that would, that would absolutely qualify and we will be able to share with you some updates on our COVID-19 drawdown capabilities on the dollars reserved for the city of Norman.
Excellent. And, and DC Jackson, I appreciate your comment about creating a team of someone other than the police department. You know, we're really trying to keep our police officers doing what we need them to do and then allocate other resources in things like education and outreach. So I really appreciate that comment. That's all the questions I have right now, but I'm sure council has follow-up. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Clerk.
I'm not seeing any hands raised right now, Mayor.
You nailed it, DC Jackson.
Nope.
There you go.
There they go. Hang on. Councilmember Bearman.
Couldn't get in there fast enough. Sorry, I was trying to take notes, so I didn't forget my question. So I really like this idea of a more targeted response team because one of the, one of the concerns I had was being almost too specific and exclusionary in any kind of policy that we wanted to change. And that was some of the concerns I heard from people that I reached out to who owned restaurants in and outside of Campus Corner was, you know, there are other places where there are high rates of transmission like churches and gyms. And so why, why just bars and restaurants? So I like the idea of a response team. My question, and it was kind of partly answered with the overtime question about CARES Act funding, but when you talk about code enforcers and fire marshals, they tend to work during the day and on weekdays. And, you know, really our issues are late in the evening and on weekends. So it kind of sounds like we're looking at CARES Act money to maybe shift some of their schedules and, you know, pay for overtime. Is that really what I'm hearing is that this would be a team of code enforcers, fire marshals and police officers or any combination of the three? But that they would be working at the times when we're seeing the majority of these issues happen and not just during their regular.
Yes, that, that would have to be the, a question asked by those department heads on what they're going to allow their people to do. I'm really suggested that as, as an alternative means in using, you know, uniformed police to go in and do those things. So yes, because the, the times of violations tend to be late at night, very early in the morning. I do know the fire marshal, the fire inspectors have worked with us in the past to check occupancy and capacity. So they're real flexible that way. I cannot ask for code. And that would be something we would have to refer to their, their manager and their department head.
Your Honor, we did have a conversation regarding our current memorandums of understanding with our bargaining units and the opportunity to alter for special assignments. The regular work schedule is absolutely possible and based on the workload remaining for the code enforcement team, we could see a combination of comp time, overtime and schedule adjustments throughout the fall semester.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. I certainly would prefer to use CARES Act funding for that kind of thing rather than our very limited general fund. And so, you know, I'm just gonna, before I, before I turn it over to everyone else, I'm just going to give kind of my feedback and then my own suggestion. So kind of related to that feedback by businesses of being concerned about being specifically targeted with ordinance changes, you know, they pitched some broader applicability of reducing capacity limits to, let's say, 75% for all other types of businesses in town, most of which would probably already be complying with that because we are still not seeing, you know, a complete return to fall semester retail traffic even. So I thought that was not an out of the realm of possibility suggestion. The one thing I did want to point out is that the majority of these other types of businesses, maybe with the exception of churches, they all still require masks when you're at a retail store. The big difference with restaurants and bars is that prior to, or instead of just walking in, you know, they, you know, you typically don't see people sitting at tables in restaurants just wearing masks and then pulling them off to take a sip of their drink or to eat. So I do think that there is a very specific issue with restaurants and bars in terms of transmission, likelihood of transmission. But I did get, I did get a recommendation from some community members that I actually thought was a pretty good one when it comes to where the majority of these issues tend to happen, which is Campus Corner and mostly concentrated along ASP. And so their recommendation was, you know, to close off ASP and allow that to be basically an open-air patio for any of the restaurants or any of the bars. I believe we closed off ASP once for game day in the not-too-distant past and it seemed to work out pretty well. So that's just another idea to throw out there that as we're looking at possibly purchasing some equipment to allow restaurants to have parking spot seating for outdoor dining, that that might also be a possibility on game days or even kind of on a longer-term basis is to close off ASP maybe for weekends and allow that to be an open space. So just a thought, I thought, I thought it was something worth pitching to everyone and kind of taking that into consideration because it seems to be reflected in, in, in Mr. Jackson's report of what they saw when they were out doing this, this targeted undercover, you know, review. And that there do seem to be more problems on Campus Corner than anywhere else, even though those violations or those issues might be more easily addressed than we would have thought. So just something to consider that we do have a street that has been closed off before to what I consider to be pretty positive results. So just something to consider as we talk about how we want to proceed with this. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
So Deputy T. Jackson, thank you for your report. And I wanted to just expand a little bit on the idea of the team that you would have in place. So it would consist of a code enforcement person and a fire marshal or specifically what?
Yes, because typically they don't, they have enforcement powers. They write tickets just like the police do. So, you know, but instead of sending the police. So, you know, but instead of sending the police in to do all these things, you know, they deal with occupancy, capacity and things of that nature. And they can cite for those types of violations if need be.
And is code enforcement part of the police department or is that a?
No, they are not.
Okay. Okay. And so who do they report to?
They report to, I'm sorry.
Code enforcement reports to Jane Hudson in community development and the fire marshals to the fire chief.
Okay. So I always get confused about this. So what is the difference between code enforcement and code compliance?
Same thing.
It's, yeah, our understanding that's the same group, um, and code enforcement can enforce large portions of municipal code violations like, uh, the mask ordinance. Just, you know, typically they work Monday through Friday eight to five, but, uh, here's an opportunity for those special assignments. Because we really don't have near, uh, the lack of compliance Monday through Friday eight to five. So we need to work, um, when the work is happening. So those altered schedules and/or some overtime that's reimbursable through CARES Act, uh, does seem like the perfect solution.
Okay. So would, would, um, and, and how many people do we have currently that are employed in code enforcement?
There's at least five that I know by sight. Uh, there may be a couple more than that. And then on the fire marshal's side, they've got, uh, well, we got the fire chief on chief. How many folks on the, on the fire, uh, prevention side could work in this capacity? Looking and verifying, uh, occupancies.
Sure. Thank you, city manager pile. We have four inspectors and we have the fire marshal. So yeah, just listening to everybody's comments here, uh, as deputy chief Jackson stated, there have been targeted operations in the past dealing with occupancy load issues. And we work closely with PD on those. Also, you know, if PD sees an issue and it's after hours, then they have all the authority to call and request the fire marshal to come to that location. I think that the city manager stated properly, we look at maybe a, um, a schedule, uh, changing a schedule to meet this need and then, uh, comp time and overtime to address these issues. And we would definitely be happy to participate in any kind of targeted team that would, could address this.
Okay. So are we envisioning, um, this team as just on call as needed? And they would be, um, called in as, um, NPD is out and about? Or are we, um, thinking more along the lines of having some kind of schedule or rotation?
Scheduled in advance, uh, just so everybody knows when they're going to be available and what their altered schedule may look like leading up to the event. Uh, but now we've got a home football schedule, um, and, and we know we'll have different crowds, uh, at different times for home games than we will for the away game schedule. So we'll be able to work very strategically and make sure we have the right number of, uh, folks on the team for each event that we're, uh, prepared to inspect.
Okay.
I agree.
And also when we schedule, we, we have the opportunity to be more proactive versus reactive.
Okay. That's what I was going to say. My hope is, it, the time for being reactive is well past. We are, you know, swimming in a pandemic. We need to be proactive and continue to educate.
Yeah. Um, then the, the, the next piece of this is just again to deputy chief Jackson. What, did you, or could you tell from those that reported back to you? Were the capacity issues in general or numbers of, um, customers in the 25 different bars that you, um, went to visit, did you see a difference in capacity? From campus corner versus other bars around town?
There were more people, uh, per the information I received from Lieutenant Garnan in the campus corner area.
Okay.
So, yeah, there are higher, higher numbers of folks.
Okay. Um, I was just wondering if there was some actual evidential support for that because that's certainly, uh, the feedback that, um, I have been getting from, um, just establishments within Ward Four. Are the bars on Main Street are still struggling with capacity. Whereas the real issues that we're seeing seem to be coming from campus corner. So I do like, um, the suggestion from council member Beerman that, you know, we might be able to look at the outside piece of it. Um, the other thing that, um, I'm wondering if it was, it, maybe it just wasn't observed in the same way this weekend. But there have been so many, um, uh, actual posts on social media and reports of, um, these terraces that are just shoulder to shoulder, uh, with customers in an outside setting in the bars on campus corner. And I'm wondering if that was observed this weekend or not.
Let's see. I think I specifically asked Lieutenant Garnan that question going down through my notes. Did you, yes, I asked him, did you observe any long lines of folks, perhaps not social distancing or not wearing masks outside their establishments? And he mentioned the three bars in question. Clear out that they would, the lines would be a little long and he didn't know if they were in groups or individuals or what. But there were more people outside those three establishments. That's what he noted. And it was, uh, logies to porch and not too social.
Mm-hmm. And those, those are the three specific establishments that I've probably heard the most about as, um, award for representative. And just the concern of, um, you know, the lack of social distancing. Even though we do have it spelled out in our mandate that there are not supposed to be any standing room only areas. That's certainly been documented over and over and over again. Um, I can't speak to inside, but certainly outside that the standing room only piece of it has certainly not been complied with. And that, um, the lines, um, to enter also have been lacking in any kind of social distancing. Which has really been a cause of great concern for, um, residents and other, um, uh, business owners on campus corner. So, um, those were the things that I think are the, of the biggest concern that I hope we can continue to address. And, um, if we have, you know, teams of people out to be more proactive, that would definitely be something that I would like to see. So I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Petron.
Hello. Um, generally speaking, and this may be a question for the mayor. When we were just doing our, um, refresher on the ordinance that we have currently, um, do we have, uh, anything specific that says no bar stools? So just because they're standing typically at the bar, what about sitting at the bar?
That is a great question. And I was actually asked that question. Does that count as seating? Since people aren't loitering, they're actually seated and we don't address that. That's why I think we, we allowed ourselves some space to make any updates that could help clarify that. And, and I'll defer to, to Ms. Walker about if that needs to be added or if that counts as seating. Because having people sitting there keeps people from standing there. So there is that.
Yeah, I, I believe it would count as seating. You know, the type of seating isn't defined, but it is a seat. But they still would have to be arranged to promote social distancing between groups of patrons. So you couldn't have a bunch of bar stools lined up around a bar, uh, all within six feet of one another if, unless it's one party, just like at a dining table. So someone's just sitting at the bar, having a drink, their stool needs to be six feet from the one that closest to them.
And then what time were the checks taking place?
From 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM.
Okay. Um, okay. So the, um, enforcement ability for repeat offenders. If we have certain establishments or areas that, um, seem to be, um, the worst about maybe not paying as close attention to capacity issues. It's my understanding that the ordinance currently is, you know, a fine, um, perhaps, or do we have anything?
It does carry a fine. Once the charge is adjudicated, it can be anywhere from $50 to $500 each day constitutes a separate offense. Those maximums are limits that are set by state statute and that's what we've incorporated here. Typically, if a prosecutor is seeing repeat charges on the same business, that fine is going to ratchet up pretty quickly. Uh, and if they continue to not comply, I, I believe we would, we could pursue civil enforcement action. So go ask a judge for an injunction, something along those lines if they weren't complying. Typically with the tickets, we will see compliance.
Is it, um, Ms. Walker, is it a ticket per infraction? In other words, each body that's in the bar that, um, is over the limit? Or is it, oh, you had 300 extra people today, so that's a $50 fine?
It, um, I believe the way it's written, it would be, uh, you know, a ticket for failing to comply with capacity limitations as required by the ordinance. So, you know, you could potentially, I suppose, write a ticket if you have five people standing in a standing room only area, not seated, write five different tickets. Uh, but typically what we would see is one ticket written to the organization. Usually once the police get there, they do comply. And, and we would proceed from there in municipal court.
Okay. Um, so we may need to take a closer look at that, um, if we have, because it sounds to me like it's, if you have certain, um, bars that just make a business decision not to comply because it's cheaper to pay the fine. We're going to have to adjust that on our end for repeat offender type of situation.
Right. Uh, the one thing I would say, if, if we were trying to file a charge for every person that was over capacity, we would have to know who that person was and be able to identify them for the criminal prosecution. And that can be a challenge. A lot of times it's easier for the officer to just say, I saw, you know, 10 people standing there in the bar, standing in your only area, not seated. Rather than say, this one person was violation, this next person was violation. That's just typically what we see.
But the citation isn't for the customer, correct? It's for the bar owner.
Correct. But we'd have to be able to identify who was, uh, standing in an area where they shouldn't be for criminal prosecution purposes.
What about just a picture?
Yeah. I mean, I think that, that could work. That would be unusual, but I think that could work.
Okay. Um, and then let's see. In order to, to do this, would we need to have a particular percentage of capacity for the code enforcers to be able to, better legitimize their citations? In other words, other than saying, I, I saw someone not social distancing, give them an actual percentage of capacity that you do a quick head count. If they're over, they're over.
The way it's currently written, that would not be necessary. Uh, that's certainly one way to do it and it would be a straightforward way to do it. But what they would do, the way it's written is walk in. If they see people in the standing room area only or a large group congregated around the bar, not socially distanced and not, not together as in a seated group, uh, they, they could just, uh, write the ticket for that.
Okay. Um, I think that that is all the questions that I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
A lot of my comments and questions have already sort of been answered. I'll just kind of state that I really like the thought of like actually having a team and enforcing our ordinance instead of doing some, you know, punitive blanket, uh, measures against the whole city of Norman. But just a question, uh, deputy chief Jackson, would you recommend doing this on Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, every single weekend? How long would you see this carrying out?
I would do that for the team to strategize when they were going to do that. And I would also just suggest that it's not done on those three nights all the time because then you get patterned. They expect to clean up their, uh, straighten up what they're doing if they're under compliance for those three days and not the rest of the week. So if I were running that particular team, I would be sure that they mix it up so that they're not patterned. They may show up, uh, on Wednesday, you know, they may show up earlier on a Friday than, than later. But you'd have to mix it up so you're not patterned. If that makes any sense.
Thank you.
It's also worth pointing out that as we continue to, tonight's discussion, there are some other factors that we need to be considering as we plan out a potential team strategy. Home gatherings that we have also gotten concerns about and game day. And those are two wholly different things. So I, if there's any other comments on this, uh, madam clerk, we can continue on, but I wanted to make sure that we address those as well tonight.
Um, councilmember Hall has her hand raised.
Um, I, I have a question and I'm actually not sure who, who want to be, uh, who would respond to this. But, um, there have been so many, um, I would say, community observations and community concerns. So, um, how, how would a resident who is observing, um, what they might see as a, a compliance issue? How would they be able to report that when it's actually happening to maybe activate a team to go and check it out?
I think DC Jackson and I had discussed this. It would be the non-emergency line. I don't know if our action center is manned after, again, five o'clock. It's not. So that's gonna, once we get the team established, I, I'm sure the police department would work with our, our dispatchers who are monitoring that 24 hour line to instruct them that that's who they notify.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised right now, mayor.
Okay. So for the.
I'm sorry. I missed one. We have, uh, Michael Nash on with us tonight and he has a call better question.
Mr. Nash.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it's a quick question. Aside from clever workarounds such as outdoor seating and any formal, is there any formal system of exemption or leniency? Or any of those otherwise optional? This councilman Hall pointed out campus corner is campus corner. And while sometimes good judgment of the Greek community has its lapses, there are mom and pop moonshine lounges with, uh, perhaps 20% daily unique visitors that may feel this ordinance is too aggressive. Uh, where the patrons are essentially close knit cliques. And, you know, for them, it's in the owner's best interest not to have an outbreak at the establishment. And most will probably choose to comply with the ordinance, at least they probably will after the first incident. But I just want to clarify whether or not there's any formal means in place to, to get those exemptions.
There's not anything in the ordinance as it stands now that gives, grants any exception or exemption. But it is written so that, uh, you know, in, in a bar where there's not a lot of seating, they could add tables and allow them to be, you know, set up six feet apart, things like that. So that they could gain some seating in a way that complies with the ordinance.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Now I think we're ready to.
All right. Uh, DC Jackson, on to the kind of social gathering at, you know, private homes. My understanding that we did not look into that this weekend, which I think I'm fine. Councilwoman Holman was able to, to share his own personal experience with us last Tuesday, uh, in the area. For those of you watching, wards four and ward seven tend to have, uh, the large amount of student housing in our community. Uh, and we're happy to have our students here in Norman. We, we just have to find ways to work together always, but especially in a pandemic. So we had spoken about and, and Ms. Walker, I'll have you clarify the ordinance that we had spoken about that could be used to address dangerously large gatherings in terms of in a pandemic. Otherwise it would just be loud and obnoxious, but now it's actually a health concern.
Sure. So we adopted an ordinance, uh, for nuisance parties back in 2004, I believe. Really probably tying into when, oh, you had a, uh, alcohol poisoning death on campus and, and those activities were firmly moved off campus. We saw a growth in these kind of large parties. I can remember several, uh, parties. And I'm talking four or 500 people on occasion, uh, very large parties. And so this nuisance party ordinance allows, uh, the police to go in. And if they're having a party where. And if they're having a party where there are at least three violations of certain sections of our code set out, I'll just give you a few examples. Possession of alcohol, furnishing of alcohol, narcotics, consuming spirits in a public place, disturbing the peace, those kind of things. And it results in three violations, so three charges are filed. Others who are there could be filed with a violation of a different section of the code for attending the nuisance party. But what it really does is, in addition to allowing the police to shut down the party, it sets up a pattern of conduct, so if it's happening at the same house over and over, that house can be declared a public nuisance after three convictions of violations of this ordinance within a 365-day period. And, and that really shuts down the, the house as being the party place. We haven't had to use it a lot. We did early on quite a bit, but in recent years, not as much, although it is still a tool that our police can use to shut down some of these larger parties. The list of potential violations that would make it qualify are long, and in a big party, you're typically going to find three at least.
Councilmember Peacock has a question.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Just to clarify that, so the citation would go to the property owner, not the resident, correct?
Correct, it, what can be the resident, it's, it's pretty broad. It says no person, owner, occupant, tenant, or other person in possession, control, or having responsibility for the party. That's where the nuisance party tickets go. But if you get three of those within a year, you're declaring the property public nuisance. And that's where it impacts the property owner, and that's typically the usual-
And so is there any mechanism to notify the property owner, say a resident gets one, maybe two violations, where they don't, they don't tell their landlord? Is, is there a mechanism of the city to, you know, make that notification happen?
There's nothing required by the ordinance per se, but typically what we would do if we get three charges within that timeframe is we would send a letter to the property owner in going through that nuisance property declaration process. And so they would learn about it then. I can't recall ever having to get that far. I think they hear about it, and I think it's been pretty effective prior to having to get to that point.
Good, thank you.
So building on that, this could be a tool that I believe this, this kind of team that we're envisioning could enforce, correct? City manager pile, this falls under that purview?
Yes, Your Honor.
And Ms. Walker, is it your understanding that this kind of, again, especially a COVID party, which I believe, if you haven't heard of those, yeah, but just a party in the age of COVID, that could fall under this, correct?
Yes, any party that's a larger gathering that's creating disturbances, there's a lot of drinking going on, things like that. You're typically going to find three violations when you get there.
And I think the important distinction between this and the disturbing the peace is disturbing the peace forces a neighbor or a citizen complainant to make the complaint, sign the ticket, and it really pits neighbors against each other. And again, we're, we're trying to all live together in harmony in our beautiful college town. So I, I prefer this method, especially if we now have a team that could work that in somehow. And Dr. Serrata, I see that you're still on here. I would love for you to communicate to our Greek community that we are now prepared to start using this law to crack down on these large social gatherings. And of course, we, we are very happy to educate, but we've also been here for the last three weeks and, and haven't seen much improvement on that situation. So that, feel free to, to please share with them that, that the city is moving forward on that. And I know that the, the university has had many discussions about what other universities have done with creating student code violations. And while no decisions have been made on that, I know one of the dilemmas was, well, what documents would we point to? Well, we would have documents to point to in this scenario. So again, I'm, I'm happy that we can work together on this and addressing that issue, but, but definitely please communicate. And I did put in the chat the link to that ordinance, so you can see it for yourselves, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clark. Yeah, that is one way that we could effectively work. And it's not, and it's, it's also based on precedents in which we've gotten police information, engaged information, that we've been able to follow up with our judicial and conduct office as well. So that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman has a question.
Thank you. I would definitely agree with the comments about what's changed since the rules at OU changed about consumption of alcohol on campus 15 years ago or so. There's definitely been an increase in off-campus activity, larger parties. I mean, there's always been house parties, but I think larger ones we've seen off-campus now. And what I've seen just in my neighborhood, I've lived on this block for 10 years, actually. I lived in this house for eight years, but I've lived in this block, live in the apartment next door for 10 years. And the houses behind my street face Chautauqua and are not on campus. And there's just been increasingly number of very large parties that have been taking place there. The one last week was the largest I think I've seen on this block in the 10 years that I've lived here, actually. The loudest and maybe the most people just right around here. And I, my real goal would not to be to cite people or find people or anything like that. It would just really be to, to get, get compliance more so with the consideration of COVID-19. But when that's not around, I mean, I'm perfectly fine with people having people over and having parties. I think that's fine. But being courteous of neighbors, I think, is, is a requirement, though. And, but right now, we have to really consider the implications of these large parties when it comes to COVID. So again, I would just like to see us get more compliance without having to come down on people real hard unless we really have to. But just to clarify from Catherine, I think you did clarify it, three violations in a year, but those three violations could take place at the, you know, at the very same event.
Three instances of nuisance parties. To have a nuisance party, you've got to have three violations.
It would be three separate parties. So you really have to be like nine violations, really.
Right.
Okay, in three different instances. Okay, that is what I have on that right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
So just to follow up on Councilmember Holman, this is a chronic issue in our wards that surround the OU campus. And I think I want to start by saying that I live across the street from a fraternity house. I live in this neighborhood on purpose because I love the diversity of my neighborhood. I love the vitality and the energy of students who live around me and close to me. So I don't want any of my comments to be misinterpreted as not valuing the richness of having students being part of our community, because I think that's one of the reasons that it makes the presence of the university and student population certainly makes us a better place, a more interesting place. So just want to say that to start out. But what we're talking about tonight is particularly acute because we are in a public health emergency. But the, the instances of these types of parties has really increased over the years in direct relationship, I would say, to changes in policy at the university. And I really am encouraged that we're looking at maybe a different toolkit moving forward. I have a fly, I'm sorry, y'all. It's just driving me crazy. And anyway, I'm encouraged by looking at a different toolkit to address this, because up until now, it has been primarily put upon the neighbors to call and file a complaint when there's either too loud, too many people, too much alcohol, too many cars, all of the things that can disrupt a neighborhood later at night. And what, what's happened is, over time, neighbors are really intimidated to file a formal complaint. And that's what has to happen for any action to be taken when there is a party of some sort that is a disturbance to the neighborhood. So being able to move this to more of a code enforcement approach, I think, would be beneficial for everybody. And I agree with Councilmember Holman. We always want to start by educating. And I know in my own neighborhood, in my own neighborhood association, we have really made it a point to reach out to our student neighbors. And when they're at, when there is an issue, we rarely try to contact the police department to intervene if we can, if we can build community with students that we live around. And I'd say we have positive results with that many, many times, because a lot of times they just, you know, they're just having a great time, and they don't realize that their actions really do have a direct, a direct adverse, adverse consequence to the people that live around them that have to get up early in the morning to go to work, or they have small kids. And so, you know, we understand all that. So of course, taking the approach of trying to educate and disperse the party is the first thing. But I will say that some of the problems that we've experienced just in the past two weeks that are chronic in nature, but again, we're in a public health emergency, is we, we're not seeing, because it's been dependent on neighbors filing a formal complaint, we are not seeing the dispersed, dispersment of the party or a reduction in numbers, or really any kind of relief of, you know, closing down the party or encouraging more social distancing or reducing the number of people present and all that sort of thing. So I am definitely in favor of taking a different approach to take the, take the onus off the neighbors, because frequently what happens is they don't file a complaint, and then there aren't any violations to follow up on, and there are no ways to address the nuisance house. And frequently what happens is there, you know, there are calls that are made over and over, but if no formal complaint is filed, no action is ever taken. So I really hope that we can move forward with a different approach and have the ability of our code enforcement officers to be able to write the ticket and not have it dependent on the neighbors to file a formal citation. Because as Ms. Walker said, I, I'm not sure I know of anything that's ever been shut down. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that neighbors are really unwilling to file a complaint because they want to, they want to be good neighbors, and they don't want to be harassed. And so if we can move away from that and into a different model, I am all for that.
Mr. Nash.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I see the possibility of an uptick in private parties because of the occupancy ordinances, regardless of nuisance party ordinances. Can we at least make the victims of an outbreak feel safer being forthcoming to lend their truthful contact tracing information?
Yeah, I, I don't see, and I don't think anybody would be blamed for being honest about where they were if they were hosting the party where 50 people caught it. I think that might be a different story. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so the, when a nuisance party has occurred, the, the host can still get a citation retroactively after the fact?
I don't know if it'd be retroactive. I think it would be like in the moment, based on how I read the ordinance. I'll, I'll let PD or City Legal jump in if I'm not interpreting that correctly.
Oh, that's correct. Typically, it would be tickets written right there at the scene. Charges filed in municipal court are considered criminal misdemeanors. So they either have to be witnessed by the officer themselves in order to write the ticket, or they have to be signed by a citizen complaint, generally speaking. And so if the officers get out there and they see these things going on, they can write tickets right then and there, you know, regardless of, of later potential outbreaks that can be traced back to the party. If they get called out to the party, that's when they would be writing those, those tickets.
Okay, so if there's an outbreak from a party a week prior, the people who catch it are safe to divulge their, their contact history and report that occurrence without fear of any kind of a citation being written?
Right.
Okay.
I'm going to interrupt here, guys, right quick, if you don't mind. The, the response team going into the neighborhoods and writing those citations would probably be better served on the police end, because folks can be a little rowdy, and we're out anyway, we can respond to those, and we can observe those three violations and, and handle them while we're out. The response team that I mentioned earlier were those specifically for those violations of businesses, because then you have fire can go in and do counts and make sure no people are in compliance. I don't know if that team would be as effective, you know, in the neighborhoods for nuisance houses. I think that may be better on the police plate for that, unless, of course, we have identified teams on the police side that would go out and respond to do that, particularly if we're having problems during the football game weekends or special event type weekends where there are more than normal usual amount of people in, in the city. Maybe something that we may have to respond to versus this team, just kind of throwing that out there.
Well, I, I completely understand that, and I was kind of hoping you wouldn't say that, just because-
I didn't want to say it, but yeah.
Well, I know we just need to be honest about what we're dealing with, but we know how busy the police are. We obviously want everyone to be safe and handling these situations. But in some of our emergency management meetings, we talk about trying to address these party houses. You see Captain Barber's eyes get real big. Yeah, so I, I, I hope that the fact that we're, we're willing and ready to enforce it, though, knowing that, will, will help communicate to, to residents that we're trying to take this very seriously. And we all need to do our part, but thank you for, for clarifying that.
We can work on some strategies on our end, I think, and see how, what that, how that works. But I didn't want to put that off on that particular team. Code and this is throwing houses at night is just pretty much not what they're supposed to be doing. So I'm all, sorry.
No, that's, that's why you're here.
Councilmember Hall.
Okay, I, I just have a follow-up with that then, because I, I under, I think I understand what you're saying. But I guess what I want to see moving forward is if, if the code enforcement team is not a viable out option, then I am assuming that as police officers go out, that they also would have the ability to write the citation. Is that correct? Or is it still going to be dependent on neighbor complaint signing a formal charge?
It's like City Attorney Catherine was saying, is that we go out and we witness those three violations. You know, you don't have to have someone complain. If we get someone calling out, calling to our dispatcher communications and complaining about a house that's causing an issue, disturbing the peace, whatever, we responded at home. And we see these violations, and there's about 30 of them. We need three of those violations, so when we can then enforce the nuisance party and shut it down at night, we don't have to have a neighbor or anyone file a complaint for that. We can do that on our own.
Okay.
And if I'm mistaken, Catherine, correct me, but I think we can do that on the police side.
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is the, the nuance of it is a neighbor may observe a violation of some sort, but by the time you get there, you may not be in a position to, you may, that particular instance has already been in the past. And so you would have to identify your own observation of some sort of violation if the neighbor was reluctant to file a complaint.
If we show up and then it's no longer occurring, then that neighbor would have to file the complaint. We would have to witness that.
Okay.
Witness one of the three elements of that, of that ordinance.
Okay, so I guess I'm interested in if there's something to- Okay, so I guess I'm interested in if there's something to add to that ordinance that covers a public health emergency. So when, and I'm talking about a very specific instance that happened less than two weeks ago where there was a, a, a single family home in a neighborhood and there were 70 young men in the backyard. And it was loud and it was noisy and, and, and a neighbor called to complain. I don't know if a formal complaint was ever filed. But if, if, if that instance, would you be able to do anything just based on the fact that they were unmasked, and no social distancing and creating a potential public health hazard? I'm not, do we have anything that would cover that right now? Or will you have to observe something else to disperse the party?
I will tell you, I'll give you an example of a lot of the, what seems to be popular nowadays. For instance, is the COVID parties, okay? There is a, an ordinance and that, that I think would best address that beyond the nuisance party. And this is something, you know, that Catherine can, can, can chime in on as well. It's Section 15505 unlawful assembly. And that, that says to wit, no two or more persons shall assemble righteously or being assembled together acting concert to do any unlawful acts against the peace or the public safety of others. And that's under 15505 unlawful assembly. So I think that would fit more in, if there's an intentional party and the intent is to, to subjugate the public safety, we can use that, that ordinance as well. By my interpretation, I'm, I'm sorry, Catherine, go ahead.
I, I think the challenge with that is we don't have a social gathering limitation. And our ordinance doesn't require masks at a private home. So if you've got so many people in the backyard, they really aren't violating any ordinance unless they're being loud or having, you know, underage drinkers or any of those other things that are listed in our nuisance party ordinance. So I think that would be the challenge is you could point to the unlawful assembly ordinance, but that's really connected to the public emergency powers in terms of rioting and things like that. And we don't have anything that prohibits that.
Under.
This public emergency.
Under the nuisance party, one of the things is a health nuisance, which goes back to Section 10. And under that health nuisance, it's got a public nuisance, which talks about a public nuisance as a thing after occupation or use of property which shall annoy, injure, endanger the safety, health, comfort or repose of any considerable number of persons. That may be something we could do there.
That's certainly something we can try. I just don't know if it meets the criminal standard when, when those types of gatherings are permitted and under our code.
I'm hopeful with what Chief Foster's saying. That was how I read it too, was, you know, at least at our, at our bars and restaurants where they're seated at tables, we're making efforts, you wear masks until you're not and all that. And I guess outdoors is better than indoors. But you know, if we found a basement of, you know, someone's house where there's 150 people packed into it and no one's wearing masks and shoulder to shoulder, surely that would fall under the health thing. If not, I had spoken with Councilmember Hall. Maybe that's what we amend because we have seen that the shortcomings of a pandemic happening once a century. And, and we've had to kind of catch up to that. I mean, look at our emergency ordinance powers. It's for Molotov cocktails and riots, not pandemics. So I would be open for that. But I, I understand what you're saying about the limitations being, if it's just a large gathering, then we should, I should, through the emergency power, limit large gatherings. But then there are also differences between safe and not safe large gatherings, which is what I'm trying to zone in for those.
Councilmember Holman.
Okay. So I definitely would like to see maybe what some other college towns like us do to address party, parties in general like this. If, if, if there are any examples of code enforcement or non-police response, at least initially, to those types of situations. Because I do want to, just like Councilmember Hall was kind of getting out there was about, I just want to make sure, because I did have a, a neighbor around the corner here that contacted me last week because they had called the non-emergency line about that party and were told that they would have to sign a ticket. To me, it was so loud that any police officer driving by, I mean, if I understand, would have been able to just stop and investigate. The base was extremely loud, you could hear it for blocks away. But that is kind of what my concern would be too, is if, if the police are our only option for a response to that, making sure that resident, that, that, that that is not on the residence to have to sign something, which I agree with Councilmember Hall. It create, does create kind of a situation where neighbors may feel intimidated about it. You know, or just feel like it may be a big hassle for them to have to do that. So some sort of proactive enforcement, whether it could be through the police or some other college towns, Tuscaloosa, you know, Boulder, Berkeley, many of these other college towns, if they, that are like, size similar, Amber. If they do anything to address this type of issue, if they're doing anything different because of COVID to address this type of thing that we might be able to use, I'd be very interested in that in regard to these gatherings and, and big parties and stuff. Thank you.
Councilmember Petron.
So this conversation kind of reminds me of the one we were having earlier about fraternities versus regular residences. And I would like to understand more about how this nuisance proposition would apply to a fraternity house when 80 to 100 kids live there. If they're of legal drinking age, and I know we're a dry campus, but say they're all drinking Kool-Aid and it's loud Kool-Aid. How does that apply? I mean, if, if they live there, it's.
It doesn't matter if they live there or not, if the other violations are cited, are, are seen and cited. I mean, it's a, it's a long list of potential violations within the ordinance. So it could still be a situation where they're, they're meeting this ordinance in their fraternity house. It doesn't have to be a private residence.
Okay, well, I guess if, if, if this is something that we're looking to implement and if we do decide to implement this, I would definitely want somebody to go out and let the houses know that there is a change taking place. Because this is really out of the norm for us. I honestly, I mean, this all is really uncomfortable for all of us, I'm sure. So I know I'm not alone and not enjoying this conversation. But I'm like, they're not in my ward, so have fun with that, Lee. But I just, I just would hate for them to get, be caught unawares with this. Same thing with the restaurants conversation, by the way. I, my biggest concern from Ward Three perspective is that a lot of restaurant owners live in my ward, not the, and so I, I don't want, for me, I, I, if we can keep OU open, you know, and kids here in, in person, that's good for the bar owners. When they go 100% virtual, well, then all of our out of state kids go back home. And even a lot of the non-Norman native kids go back to whatever town that they lived in. So that's not good for business. And that's why having this conversation is also a very pro-business conversation to be having because the summer months are really hard. And to have summer months for business in the fall is insane. So we want to protect them. But at the same time, I'm, I have concerns about how this would apply for the fraternity and sorority houses when they're not used to having something like this apply to them. So I don't know who that would be, but we need to.
I do. I mean, as, as I think DC Jackson has covered, our, our step one is always education. And I'm, I'm hoping that just by educating, that we're willing to use this, we'll start getting some attention and hopefully deter some dangerous behavior.
Absolutely, I just want, I was just really hoping that, I mean, I realize this probably isn't going to, we're not voting on anything tonight, it doesn't sound like, nothing's even written. So if we do, I, I want to understand that better. But just between now and whenever this is something that we might decide, or if maybe we don't need to vote on it, maybe it's just having this discussion. And we say, yeah, those particular ordinances that we just dusted off from like 30 years ago could apply. I just would really hope that we're communicating with those House Presidents or House Moms or whatever. And it sounds like we have some people from OU still on the call. Maybe they could let them know too. That's all.
I think Dean, Dean Surratt had to leave, but, but I know they are meeting with the individual House Presidents, I believe, Thursday. So that's why it was so important to have them on this call.
I'm seeing no other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, we've tackled some unsafe gathering issues in terms of some public restaurants, some private gatherings. And now the final hoop to jump through, game day. So we know that OU is not tailgating. And we will not be doing a tailgating event in Reeves Park right next to it because it kind of totally goes against what they were trying to do. But we also know that when we have home games, people will come to Norman, which is a good thing, we know that. And it's, we all look forward to it. And frankly, I think we need teams to rally behind right now. So I, I'm looking forward to football season. However, we have had restaurants share concerns that they were like, please football, please football, oh my gosh, football. And they're realizing that they're about to be massively overwhelmed by very large crowds. So I know that Campus Corner is working on a plan, kind of what Councilmember Beerman was talking about, where we are going to market off and try and space things out and allow a lot more outdoor seating. And I know that there perhaps are some arrangements in other areas of town where they're again providing outdoor venues that can be controlled and facial coverings. And well, when people aren't eating or drinking, of course. But there have been questions from restaurants saying, just tell us if there's going to be any sort of game day restriction. And so with, and I actually spoke to Mayor Joyce in Stillwater today. And I told him, you know, we're thinking about what to do with home games. He's like, home games, what about away games? Isn't that the ones where you should really worry about people in the nutted restaurants? And that was another thing to scare me. But with like pay-per-view games, most people will go to restaurants. So I would love to hear council's thoughts on, on where we're at with that. Because there has been a game day planning committee. And Chief King sits on that with me, City Manager Pyle, you're in there as well. Councilmember Hall, I think you were in the last one. There, it has been suggested that there be a 50% capacity for game day all day. Just because we don't want to overwhelm the restaurants. And again, that was a suggestion that came to us, that was not offered by us because they recognize the concern of being overwhelmed. And we, we've already shared that they have had a tough time maintaining the current ordinance restrictions on our normal days. But we all know game day is not a normal day. So maybe that's when you do a flat capacity reduction with the increased outdoor seating areas to provide that option to counterbalance the indoor option. So whatever is decided upon, it needs to be decided upon sooner than later. I know that we can get more feedback from our restaurants and vote on this. We can move this to Tuesday if we wanted to. Because then it would be in place by the first home game. But I know that our restaurants would also appreciate as much notice as possible to make arrangements. So Chief King, did I miss anything on that about what's been discussed in game day planning?
No, Mayor, I think you're, you're right on it. Definitely preparing for that surge and, and how much of those folks that are not going to be allowed in the stadium, will they come out and, and want to gather? And I think that the meetings have been very productive. I like the plans that are, that are being put in place. And, you know, capturing that tax dollar in a safe way, I think, is sort of the goal. So I, I like the direction we're headed in there.
So I've also gotten concerns from churches. You know, they've got their, their big parking lots. There may not be as much of a need for the parking, which unfortunately was a source of revenue for them. A question I have here, I know that OU has said no tailgating. Does that mean the church won't be allowed to host tailgaters? So this is, this is our job. Our job is to create policy and provide guidance. So we need to, to have some answers here. And as we all know, some people will love it, some people will hate it, but at least they have direction. So have you all been getting feedback about any game day scenarios? And again, we don't have to make a decision tonight. I, I think Tuesday, next Tuesday would be drop dead, but we, we, we need to have a plan.
Councilmember Beerman.
So I've spoken, I've spoken with a few restaurant owners, both, excuse me, within Campus Corner and outside Campus Corner. Yeah, and they seem to be okay with a 50% capacity limit across the board with the allowance of outdoor seating where available. That seems to be the big, the big deal breaker. They do recognize that if OU goes all virtual, then they really get no game day and no game day business at all. And so trying to find that right and appropriate balance seems to be very important for them. But I think with, with the allowance of outdoor seating, I think that 50% capacity on game day is achievable for a lot of them. And there didn't seem to be too much concern or heartache about it from the ones that I spoke to. And I do see a lot of concern for game day from residents as well. They don't want to be chased away or feeling like they are being chased away from bars and restaurants outside of Campus Corner, especially on pay-per-view days or away game days. They want to be able to go out and have a similar experience to college students and without some kind of appropriate capacity limit to kind of smooth out where they go and spread it out a little bit more that they don't feel that they're going to be able to. So I think it's important to recognize the impact that game days have on the regular Norman population and their ability to also go out and participate in game day related activities at restaurants. So I think at this time, I can be comfortable with a 50% capacity limit all day on game days. But I do think having a little bit more time will get feedback that will all feel comfortable. It's amazing how I assume something like an agenda, everyone starts paying attention. So I have a feeling that there'll be a lot more feedback generated over the coming days than in the previous few days. But at this, at this point, I'm feeling pretty comfortable with the conversations that I've had.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, can you confirm when we are having continued conversations about the outdoor dining?
Um, next Tuesday at the council conference.
Seems like this would all line up quite nicely then. And again, I want to emphasize, Chief King, we've had three, four of game day planning meetings where this has not been a conversation that's been in a bubble. We've involved restaurants and bars from all over town on how we're going to manage it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, that's correct, ma'am. And, you know, in those meetings, we've had 40, 50 participants in there. So a lot of people in there, a lot of good discussion. So I, I think it's really moving forward in a positive way.
Councilmember Foreman.
So I know for game days, we have a lot of neighboring agencies that come in, police officers that help do security. Now with the COVID situation, are we going to have people doing assignments around the campus to specifically enforce social distancing or shut down anyone who tries to tailgate? Like how are we, like if we close down ASP to have outdoor seating, are we going to have people there enforcing? Are those going to be new assignments added? I'm not sure.
No, it's a, a great question and it has been discussed in these meetings. And, and I'll definitely let Chief Jackson or Chief King jump in to clarify. But my understanding is because there's reduced capacity in the stadium, we have a little bit more wiggle room with expanding officers in the local areas to help with the marked off areas in Campus Corner. And there might be another one, I believe, on Gray Street. Because I mean, this is what I'm kind of talking about. We know they're going to come here. We know they're looking to have a good time. If we can be, play an active role in managing it, I think that is going to be our, our best bet. So, yeah, Chief King, is there anything else to add about that? I mean, that's, again, my understanding is we'll, we'll have more to work with. I mean, that's, again, my understanding is we'll, we'll have more to work with with the usual players with the security for game days.
Yes, and I'll, I don't want to speak for Deputy Chief Jackson, but Captain Hawkins and Captain Vincent in our meetings felt very confident with the plans moving forward and able to manage those from a fire and an Mstat perspective to having these defined areas, working with OU, you know, OU's not going to be allowing any tailgating. So that takes pressure off the bus. We can focus on the areas that we've talked about and still have a team inside the stadium to do what we've done in the past. So I think everything from an emergency response perspective will be in good shape as it always has been.
And for what it's worth, we had some, started off with big ideas about, again, trying to spread out the merriment in Norman. You know, we had talked about Brookhaven, we had talked about, you know, Lindsay, we talked, and then they were like, okay, okay, we're not that big with our, our emergency responses. So we were definitely getting creative. You know, I'd love to work with the Chamber or visit Norman and create, you know, hey, here's, you know, game day locations that have outdoor seating that are following, you know, we have 50% capacity. And maybe you could try some other place in Norman than your normal venue. You know, I'd love to see Hollywood Corners. I mean, great outdoor seating to do something there. So there's a lot of opportunities for sure.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, this is just in terms of the, the 50% capacity. I think Stillwater had an interesting caveat in their code. 50% of the fire marshal occupant or maximum number of patrons that can be seated using the spacing guidelines outlined in the ordinance. So it's not just a hard and fast 50%, but if we are able to, you know, I think Councilmember Bierman was alluding to, expand into the street front sidewalk spaces that, you know, that number, you know, probably substantially more than 50%, but still within the guidelines of the ordinance. I think it's an important takeaway.
Weather is always a consideration. Our, you know, luckily, unluckily, it is, you know, kind of how it is. But our first games are in September, so it's not the brutal heat of August. But then I believe we don't have another home game till November when it gets a little chillier. So we may have to revisit this. And we have shown that we are flexible and making data-driven decisions. So this may be what's in place just for the September games while we still have that tool of outdoors. So just pointing that out as well.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we should probably revisit first home game to see maybe what worked or didn't. This is definitely a tough one. I've grew up very close to the stadium. My grandpa had season tickets, so my dad and I used to walk up to the stadium together. Back in the game day festivities were at the old O'Connell's at Lindsay and Jenkins there across from the stadium. So game day without tailgating is definitely a very foreign concept to me. And it's hard to imagine really, but I can understand why OU has decided not to allow it. And I can understand why some of our churches and other places that might have large lots would want to know what they can do or not do. I guess one concern I might have about allowing it is that if OU is not allowing it, are we kind of going counter to that? Because there are some large churches that are north of Campus Corner, but there's also a pretty large one, you know, St. Thomas More, right close to the stadium. And so if they were allowed to, they might, I guess they might be the only spot in that whole area that would be able to host tailgaters. Maybe we could, they could do it if we put in certain parameters. And with the caveat, maybe if we find out that this, you weren't sticking to this, then it's going to be revoked for the remainder of the season, that type of thing. I'm not sure exactly. But I do like the idea of kind of spreading people out. But I also would understand that some, some of, a lot of the businesses that rely on game days would, you know, not want people to go everywhere else and not come down there. So I wasn't quite clear though, we are still planning to close down Campus Corner like we do normally. Is that what I understand?
That's correct.
Not Boyd though, right? Just ASP?
Aspen, right, right. Boyd and, excuse me, Aspen Buchanan.
And Councilmember Holman, in our, again, these, these kind of game day planning scenarios, what had been discussed was with allowing the tailgating, exactly what you're talking about. It's got to be like one entrance only. Everyone's got to be wearing masks. There's got to be a capacity limitation. So, I mean, I'd be fine, like, again, if the churches want to have a tailgate or, you know, some other group. I don't know how this is more of a Madam Clerk and City Manager Pyle question. But if it is, is it permitted? Do we want to go that far to try and allow it? Because we, again, we know this is going to happen. I would rather just make sure we, this is the behavior you will follow to do as safe as humanly possible. So that's an option.
Well, under our current ordinances for special event, it, that's not something that would require a permit. And I mean, if council wanted to just be aware of where they were located to make sure that they were complying with the ordinance, we could certainly, you know, have them register or something. But the criteria for special event was three, three things, a thousand people or more, two or more hours, and open to the public. So certainly a private tailgate would not be, would not follow, fit within that criteria. But, I mean, like I said, if you wanted to do a registration, that's something that we could do if that was council's desire.
Or put out guidelines, I mean.
And do we know if, is, is the Campus Corner setup going to be the same? So we're blocking the street off, but are there going to be the same like street vendors and all that stuff going on like we normally see in beer and all, you know?
We did receive notification that there will be fewer street vendors. They're just hesitant to sign up to participate. There's not really much recognition of what kind of crowd to expect or how much money they might be able to make signing up for a spot. So this first game is going to be interesting, I think, for all concerned. And I think if, if the crowd is there, we may see those street merchant numbers grow back to their historic averages.
Okay.
And the thought was also they would have tables out there, more so than normal.
Correct, correct. Utilizing like picnic tables on ASP to try to force people to sit down and spread out. They're currently, as City Manager Pyle stated, not working with street vendors at this time. Trying to reduce the capacity themselves and monitor that. They will have the big Jumbotron so that people can watch the game. But other than that, not all the normal outdoor stuff.
That's what I was want to clarify too, if we're closing the street off, if we are still doing that. And if so, we're going to be putting some more tables and stuff out than usual. I'm glad to hear that. Are we closing, we're not closing Lindsay Street like usual? Is that what I understand?
That's a question, please.
I think we have Lindsay going out after game.
Going out, we will be turning it one way, I think going out.
Okay.
So we're not planning on closing it both preemptively.
Okay, I know normally Lindsay gets closed down from, I guess, maybe Elm all the way to Jenkins. And then is Jenkins being closed from Lindsay to Brooks as usual too?
I would say yes.
Yes.
Okay, so pretty typical street closures except Lindsay then, okay. That is all I have really. I'm not opposed to allowing the churches to utilize the parking lots under those parameters. And then I agree with City Manager Pyle. Kind of hard to anticipate what exactly will happen this first game day. So thanks.
Councilmember Hall. So I have been able to listen in on the game day strategy meetings. And it's been really encouraging to see our Campus Corner merchants trying to address what's a new situation for them. And of course, so much of their success of their businesses are dependent on game day activity, but also recognizing that it's important for them to set the standard in a pandemic world to make everyone feel comfortable and want to keep coming back. So one of the things that's, that's been discussed is consistency with game day policies with the university. And I think I'm going to start with masks because OU, at least if I understand this correctly, their game day policy on masking is specific to game day and differs somewhat to their masking policy for every other day. And so if you set foot on OU property on game day, you are expected to wear a mask if you're inside, outside, in the stadium. And so the question came up about how will Campus Corner manage that? And I'm, and I'm wondering if we need to address that in some kind of formal way. But the Campus Corner merchants have, I believe, made the decision that they are going to follow that, the same policy as OU and require everyone to be masked. Do I understand that correctly from Chief King? Maybe make sure I understand that's what they were saying.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's the, that's what I gathered from that too. You know, in that ASP area, the, the challenge will be there, there were eating and drinking there. So the masks would be removed while doing that. But no, definitely getting the impression that they want to, we want uniform policy throughout.
So when they're walking across the street from OU to Campus Corner, we have a consistent policy. One of the things that I don't believe was discussed that I started thinking about is there usually individual tailgate parties set up, or tents, maybe I should say, set up all along, not ASP, but University. So that, is that on private property? Or is that anything that we permit as a city? Or again, if OU is prohibiting tailgating on OU property, how are we going to manage tents popping up in locations that are on City of Norman property?
I'm not familiar with the tents that you're talking about. Is it over there next to Blackberg?
It's all up and down, yes. On Black, yeah, across the street on, it's along the First Presbyterian Church parking lot. There's usually a lot of individual tents set up all along there. And maybe that's church property. I mean, maybe that's what we're talking about with this tailgating. But I just, I just didn't know.
Well, I know Blackberg, they, or Gastropub, they, they actually lease those parking spaces out fronts for what they do on game day. I'm sure that's for their beer sales and so forth. But as far as that parking lot next to the church, we wouldn't have any regulations on that normally in a normal game day experience.
Okay. Let's see. Then the other thing that we also have not mentioned is the, just, I think, cooperation and discussion with Campus Corner and the concerns about so many people being congregated in one place. And so the downtowner, the downtown is also planning an event to give people an opportunity to disperse and maybe not be in large crowds and, and take a little bit of the pressure off of Campus Corner. So there's a pretty robust plan for Main Street too. And I think we mentioned this at Norman, and I know that they are planning on promoting restaurants. Who's going to have the game available and that sort of thing? So I think there's going to be multiple opportunities for people to choose a place where they're the most comfortable. And because Campus Corner will have ASP closed off and Buchanan closed off, I, I'm also comfortable and have heard from restaurant owners that on game day specifically, that the 50% capacity may alleviate, you know, some of the pressure of having too many, too many people in our restaurants. But with that spillover being able to happen on, on ASP. And also same thing downtown, they're going to have an outdoor area, excuse me, an outdoor area, I believe in the Gray Street parking lot, and also have tables outside so that people can be seated. And I think that's all, you know, positive, positive moves in that direction. So I'm, and we also have just two games in September. And I think, you know, we would have the opportunity to see how it goes. And the, there are no home games planned in October. So we would have opportunity to see how this all works if we needed to make any kind of adjustments.
Okay, Mayor, I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. So we are, if I'm hearing this correctly, from feedback we've gotten thus far, 50% on game day only sounds like something that we can utilize to help our bars and restaurants not be completely overwhelmed, knowing that we really don't know what it's going to look like just yet. But also accommodating with outdoor seating, which we will discuss further on September 8th. Because we know that people are going to come and enjoy what Norman does best. We just want to make sure we're providing opportunities to do it safely. And again, with the end goal of keeping our students here, our residents safe, and our businesses open. So our agenda did allow us to take action tonight. But I am fine with waiting until Tuesday to get further feedback if that is something that you would like to do. And in regard to the question I received about churches, Brenda, that sounds like that is a private lot. And unless we take action of blocking gatherings of a certain limit, it is a private lot. And we, at the very least, Chief King can work with our, you know, team and emergency management, medical professionals to maybe come up with a suggestion of health guidelines to follow if you're going to do something on private lots. And again, hoping everybody makes good decisions so we don't have to take further action and can enjoy our football season safely. So I'm seeing head nods. It looks like everyone's comfortable getting some more feedback. And Madam Clerk, can we please move, it sounds like for now, just the game day restrictions? And, and I don't, I don't even like calling it restrictions. Let's call it game day protections. Because I want to make sure our servers and our bartenders and, and everyone else are safe in this environment as well. It's not just about being safe while having a good time. It's being safe while working. And we need to acknowledge that as well. Okay, any other final thoughts on that?
Councilmember Petron, I think.
Okay.
The only thing I would say is that we might take the opportunity to, Mr. City Manager, maybe submit something to the press, reminding them what the ordinances are in Norman and that we're excited for game day. But it is, we do have a mask ordinance. And, you know, OU has put a no tailgating on campus. You know, just give people a heads up that are coming into town. That would be my only thought there.
And home game is Sunday, or Saturday, the 12th. So right around the corner, it's going to be here before we know it. But it does give us a couple of opportunities and a couple of news cycles to get that information out there. So nobody is surprised when they show up on game day.
Make sure you put the sports animal on that list.
Definitely. I will throw out that, again, we're, we're trying to do things as safely as possible, encouraging social distancing, mask wearing. And the City of Norman is actually doing a Labor Day celebration with our Fourth of July fireworks, which I think will be kind of a test run to see how organized, social distance, mask-wearing events goes. You may have seen pictures from concerts that have been held in this same fashion. And I want to throw out a dream of mine, because maybe somebody watching can help me. City Manager Pyle and Chief King, you guys heard my vision of, of a retro season where we have less games. So it'd be great to vote as a community on our favorite OU games and show them on, in a park in a safe manner. Apparently really hard to get the rights to show those, but I want to make this happen because it sounds amazing and a great way to, again, continue that team spirit that I think our community really needs right now to, to bring us back together. So no action has been taken this evening, and I'm seeing no other final comments. So no action has been taken this evening. And as seeing no other final comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, Ally.